Very good. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, December 7th, 2020. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on our town's cable information channel, 1301, and will also be available for viewing on the town's website. I'm Steve McDougall, the mayor of the Town of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to ask Steve Baker, Councilman Steve Baker, to lead us in invocation for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Father God, we just come to you this evening and ask you to fill this room with your presence. We ask you to grant us wisdom. For God, we want to be good stewards of the responsibilities that we carry, and we just ask you for your assistance and your guidance. And we know that Jesus said, "Ask and you will receive," and so we ask this evening for all those things and more. And, Lord, we're just mindful of it being December and Christmas, and, God, I just pray that you fill us with just the thoughts of Jesus and His birth and the meaning behind this season in this year, God. It's in your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Baker. This time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Todd Lyle if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It was. Thank you, Mr. Lyle. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and report on our executive session for this evening. This evening, we had three legal issues we discussed. One was an issue regarding pending litigation. One was advice regarding agenda items, and the third was advice regarding town ordinances. We had two contractual issues. One was two downtown development issues, and one was regarding sewer line contract. We had one personnel item. It was a routine personnel review. No vote was taken in executive session except to... No, no vote was taken in executive session this evening. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
Say move.
We have a motion by Ms. Livingston and a second by Ms. Manis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it. Move right into our first order of business deletion on the agenda. Are there any deletions of items on tonight's agenda? There are no deletions, but there is an addition to tonight's agenda. Tonight's agenda will have, in new business, I believe it's going to be new business number five... Excuse me, new business item number six. Three. Thank you. Yes, I see it now. New business item number three will be the consideration of a mask ordinance in the Town of Lexington. It will be read in title only tonight and be discussed in open forum at our next meeting, which will be a special called council meeting in the very near future. We haven't decided on a date. Would it be in about a week or so? That would be the addition to the agenda tonight. Madam Clerk. At this time, we'll move right into approval of minutes. Copies of the minutes from the council work session on October 19, 2020 were provided to you in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections to council work session, October 19, 2020? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Say move.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second to motion. Councilmember Williams, second to motion. Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. At this time, we will move right into presentations. Our first presentation this evening is a proclamation from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. The proclamation is for the Wildcat Football Championship. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, this is a big honor for me because two of these little guys out here happen to belong to me.
Yep.
So I'm very excited to be able to do this routine with this team and to be able to watch them all year, and they're great players, all of them are. Proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington commending the Lexington-Dixie Youth Wildcat Football Team for winning the 2020 Lexington County District Championship. Whereas Lexington Youth Football has recently concluded its fall 2020 season, and whereas the Lexington Wildcats team finished the season with a perfect 0-8 record, and whereas by virtue of their perfect 0-8 record, they earned the Lexington County District Championship. And whereas the team members in jersey number order include Rocky Board, Bishop Allen, Braden Kress, Silas Oates, Lawton Brown, Jalen Brost, Connor Earl, Noah Smothers, Porter Dooley, Zaire Summers, Landon Gotten, Tyrell Murray, Lakeland Dent, Jay... I'm gonna mess up his name, I know, and he told me twice. Zuenga, Thomas Brown, Sailor McCastin, Kaufman Blakely, Parker Harmon, Colin McCallahan, Silas Diamond, Kendra Zurich, Bryson Kress, Zach Westlove, Tyler Strode, Josh Cathy, and were coached by head coaches Andy Brown and Jay Kirby, and assistant coaches Ed... You know who you are. Thomas Brown, Patrick Oates, and Adam Diamond. And whereas the mayor and council, as well as the citizens of the Town of Lexington, are always proud of the academic and athletic achievements of our local young people, now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the Town of Lexington that the Lexington-Dixie Youth Wildcat Football Team is hereby recognized and commended for its accomplishments in winning the 2020 Lexington County District Championship proclaimed this seventh day of December 2020, signed by Mayor Steve McDougall. And I'm gonna ask Coach Andy Brown to come up and say a couple of words. He's got something to say, and then I'm gonna ask all of them to come up and get a picture with us.
First, on behalf of the team and the coaches, I would like to say thank you for the town, to the town for having us tonight. And second, on behalf of the parents, the players, and all the assistants, I would like to say thank you to Coach Jay Kirby. His 40-plus years, he's been giving it to this team, to this community, for giving it back and keeping the league going. And I'd like to say thank you this year especially, in a year that was turned upside down, that we fought to have this team together and this league. I'd like to say just again, thank you for everything, and we have good things to come. Thank you.
I have to say, this group of parents and this group of kids are something else. They're really behind each other, and they just cheer each other on. And can't forget the cheerleaders now. They've got some of the best little cheerleaders in the world for this team. But they... This team has really played hard and had a lot of parent and grandparent support there, cheering and yelling and screaming and jumping up and down, and you would've thought it was the NFL. And I think these guys even have their ring. They got championship rings.
Got 'em.
Those rings. So they are excited, and this is just great. And I'm gonna ask them to come up. You were a proud nanny, 'cause you put it all over your Facebook. I did. I am a proud nanny. While we're waiting, Jay, I want to thank you for all of your years. You were down there when my son Patrick was down there.
Yeah, ball, yeah.
That's right. So thank you so much. You have. We appreciate you.
Not wait, do it.
I just drew by that, yes, ma'am.
Ronnie, all right. One, two. All right, can show your rings? All right, I need one, two. Okay.
Thank you.
Now we go.
Jay, since you're right there by the microphone, I want you to stand up there a minute and talk to us a little bit about that. You put a lot of time and effort into these football teams all these years. I'll use a little executive privilege to let my classmate from Wildcat Holla talk about Wildcat football a little bit.
Like I said, I've been doing it for a long time, and I enjoy these kids' play. It's all about between baseball, football, softball, and all the same thing. And, you know, for a long time, the same thing. I just, I enjoy these kids, and that's my enjoyment, go to work every day, get off work, go to the ball field, and smile on the kids' faces, the main thing, man. And I tell you about it, you're only as good as the guys around you. So I got good coaches around me, and that was all about. I couldn't do anything without them, same thing. You rely on them, you leave a practice or something, you put another fire out somewhere, all the teams we got out there. I had, we had 13 teams this year again, and it all worked out pretty good. Only one team really come down with this, the Corona thing there, and they sat out for about 14 days, but it all worked out well. It surprised me how it hang about. But it was all about the kids and have fun with it. But I appreciate y'all doing it for the team-wise, and these kids deserve a lot. They have. We got a real young team. By the fact, this team right here, you got 13 guys coming back.
Wow.
So we drafted real young, and it worked out well, if everybody's coming back, same thing. But I just enjoy doing it. I hope we got a few more years left. I'll be, that'll run me off on what it's gonna be, but we'll find out somewhere. Thank y'all again, y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you for everything.
If y'all want to make your way out the door, we'll... Yes, sir. Thank you. Good job, young man. Thanks, coaches. Very good. While they're going out, we can move right into our next proclamation. It's a proclamation from Councilmember Kathy Manis. It's a proclamation for the Town of Lexington Arbor Day. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington declaring December the 11th, 2020, as Arbor Day in the Town of Lexington. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the Town of Lexington that Friday, December the 11th, 2020, is hereby declared as Arbor Day in the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, and that all citizens are urged to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and by planting trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Proclaim the seventh day of December, 2020. Steve McDougall, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Manis. I believe we're gonna pass that on to Dan, and he will handle it from there. We're actually gonna have a tree planting coming up this Friday. It will be... How many, how many years, Dan?
We're probably 33 now.
33 years in a row. Planted a tree in town for Arbor Day. So very good. Thank you, Dan. Next, we would like to welcome Mackenzie R. Manning from Lexington Medical Center for a presentation. If you'd like to come forward. This is the 2020 Town of Lexington Employee Contribution to the Lexington Medical Center Foundation. Ms. Manning.
On behalf of the Lexington Medical Center Foundation, I just want to express our sincere thanks to the Town of Lexington employees for coming together. 2020, as we all know, has not been a usual year. It's been a year of a lot of uncertainty, and so as a nonprofit, it's amazing to see this type of check be donated to the foundation. This is a high for the Town of Lexington. At this point, over the last four years, the Town of Lexington employees have donated over $54,000 to support our programs and initiatives, so we can't say thank you enough. The types of things that these goes towards are cancer, cardiac, mother-baby, and this year, our COVID-19 Response Fund. I just want to take a second to tell you what that fund has been doing for the employees and the community. This fund has underwritten a respirer room called Serenity Cove at LMC. It's where our staff members can take a little bit of decompression time during these trying times. So that has been underwritten by this fund in addition to iPads for those patients who are unable to see their families. So we can't say thank you enough. We're so thankful again for your employees' generous investment of their time to impact our community and for them supporting us in return.
Very good. Thank you very much. Moving into our next presentation, I'd like to welcome Bill Shanahan to the microphone. This is a presentation to Becky's Place at Lexington Medical Center from the Mayor's Prayer Luncheon. Mr. Shanahan, welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, always great to be here. This is our fourth annual... Normally, it's the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, and due to COVID, we decided that it would be best to continue and do it when it was a little warmer during the day. And on October 28th, we had a full house of over 100 out at the stadium concourse to hear our special guest, who was WIS, is WIS Sports Director, Rick Henry. Rick had recently had a bout with prostate cancer and had the surgery, and he accepted our invitation, the mayor and I, to speak and share about how the Lord has worked in his life, and the theme was faith over fear. And it was a wonderful, wonderful afternoon. And, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the Town of Lexington and the Blowfish, we are honored to be able to present a check to Becky's Place and bring Mackenzie back up here. And this isn't as big a check as you gave, but at least it's something. Mackenzie, this is from Mayor McDougall and the Blowfish, and we just want to thank and support what you all are doing at the Lexington Medical Center Foundation and, of course, Becky's Place. And if you would just take a second to share with everyone about Becky's Place, that'd be wonderful.
Does the foundation funds help support Becky's Place? Well, it is the Midland's only appearance and resource center for individuals who are either going through cancer treatments currently. Cancer doesn't stop for COVID, unfortunately, and so our patients are still being seen on a daily basis. And so that provides wigs and other supplies for individuals going through treatment or who have just completed treatment. Every dollar counts, big or small, it doesn't matter. Thank you so much. We'll get it put to good use.
Good. Very good.
Just real quickly, just if you haven't been out yet, a lot of fun things are going on at the ballpark. There might not be baseball, but now we've got adult kickball on Wednesday nights. You gotta come out and see it. It's really a lot of fun.
Are there openings on your kickball team? Are there openings on the kickball team?
In the spring. They're sold out this spring. They're sold out. You gotta get a ticket.
Right.
Bye-bye. Merry Christmas.
Congratulations, Kathy.
Thank you.
Bill, always good to see you. Take care. Our final presentation this evening is from the Surtema Club of Lexington. Presentation to the Lexington Police Department Foundation for Guardian Angel Personal Lighting Devices for the Traffic Safety Unit. Chief Green. I think Corporal Mortensen may be coming forward.
There he comes.
Absolutely. Gentlemen, good evening. Good to see y'all.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor McDougall.
Welcome.
On behalf of the Lexington Surtema Club... Come on up here, Butch. On behalf of the Lexington Surtema Club, we're proud to be able to sponsor the Lexington Police Department. Made aware of a need of some safety devices that are lighted devices, so we, our club has decided to make a contribution towards purchasing some of those devices. Tonight, our community needs Chairman Butch Ballinton, and myself would like to make this contribution to the Lexington Police Department Foundation.
Fantastic. Guys, thank you so much. Y'all are so giving back to the Town of Lexington. We can't thank y'all enough for thinking about us all the time, and we really appreciate that. Chief?
First of all, we want to thank the Surtema Club and their donation. If you see right here, it's called a Guardian Angel device. Just last year, we had a Kershaw County deputy who was directing traffic, and he got hit. When they asked us what we would want to have, this item was picked out. We, these items, we give to our traffic division, which has five of our guys in it. Also, the foundation has, when they saw that the Surtema Club was gonna step up, the foundation bought one for each office for their Christmas gift.
Wow.
But we want to thank the Surtema Club, and if you could come down.
Yes, sir.
For the presentation.
Stick your tongue out.
Very good. Thank you. At this time, we will move into the Vision Plan Update for December 2020. Ice House Amphitheater Pavilion is close to getting a roof. The metal roof trusses are up, and work will begin this week on the roof decking and building the cupola. The pavilion and restroom expansion is expected to be complete around the beginning of the year. The open-air building will have outdoor heaters and fans, and it will be home to the market. It will also host vendors during concerts and other town events. Moving on to the update, Gibson Pond Park, concrete work continues to construct the new dam at Gibson Pond Park. Once that is complete, construction of the pedestrian bridge will get underway. It will feature two docks and a walking pier. Construction is on schedule, and the park remains closed until the project is complete. The Vision Plan goal, these projects and more are a result of the town's vision plan, which was reviewed and updated the summer before last. Council recently reviewed the vision plan and will have updates in the next coming meetings. You can go to the town's webpage and read the entire vision plan at lexsc.com. At this time, we will hear a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. New road improvements are underway at Sunset Boulevard and Middlesbrough Springs Road intersection as part of the new development. The North Lake Drive winding project near Isaiah Drive continues with utility work. Construction activity and the traffic pattern will be ongoing, so please use extra caution in this area. Road work is underway at South Lake Drive and Industrial Drive near I-20 as part of the new QuickTrip development. Exercise caution in this area. If you're aware of a traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway situation, or a pothole that needs repair, please call 358-7273 and let us know.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we will move right into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The first item on our public hearing this evening is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3420-01-013 located on Chapman Court. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item two, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-110 located at 511 Cherokee Trail. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Very good. Item number three, final reading of an ordinance for a budget adjustment in the police department. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Item number four, final reading of an ordinance to amend the FY 2021 budget for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Anyone wishing to speak to that? Hearing none. And finally, final reading of a supplemental bond ordinance to authorize SRF financing of the I-20 Pump Station Repairs Project. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Very good. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We'll move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3420-01-013 located on Chapman Court. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The Settlers Point Homeowners Association owns a parcel located on Chapman Court and has petitioned to annex the property. The neighborhood boat ramp is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential, and Chapman Court is currently not classified. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their October meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the parcel and RL6 classification for Chapman Court. I make a motion for a final reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second to motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Cornes. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-110 located at 511 Cherokee Trail. Councilmember Cornes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Michael Pierce owns a parcel located at 511 Cherokee Trail and has petitioned to annex the property. Single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential too, and Cherokee Trail is classified as a local road. Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their October meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the parcel and local road classification for Cherokee Trail. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Cornes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second to that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Final reading of an ordinance for a budget adjustment in the police department. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the budget...
During the budget cycle, capital purchases were cut to the bone. However, it has become apparent that the Police Department needs to purchase replacement vests that are expiring and replace laptops that are dying. Money is available due to savings on the chiller replacement in the Planning, Building and Technology Department. Following a budget adjustment in the General Fund is requested. We'd like to reduce the, under PB and T, capital, $26,150 and add to police capital, $26,150. Net change to appropriations of zero. Like to make a motion for approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Manis, second. So motion, any further discussion? John Hanson, this is your last chance. You want to, sure you want to do this? Very good. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Final reading of an ordinance to amend the FY 2021 budget for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. A budget adjustment for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund is required for the expansion of the regional sewer system. The adjustment increases recurring sewer revenues, capital improvements and equipment outlays, personnel, contractual services and other operating expenses. I make a motion for final reading of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2021 budget for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. So motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. His final reading of a supplemental bond ordinance to authorize SRF financing on the I-20 Pump Station Repairs Project. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I-20 Sewer System Pump Station Repair Project will include significant repairs to 15 pump stations in the I-20 service area. The state revolving loan fund, SRF, has authorized funding on the project. The project totals approximately $6.9 million. Financing requires the adoption of a supplemental bond ordinance which incorporates the terms and conditions of the SRF program. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for a final reading of a supplemental bond ordinance to authorize SRF financing of the I-20 Pump Station Repairs Project.
Mr. Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. So motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move right into new business. Our first item of new business is from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number 5423-01-005 located at 207 Schwartz Road. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patricia Dion owns a parcel located at 207 Schwartz Road and has petitioned to annex the property. Single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone protected residential, high-density residential and office commercial. Schwartz Road is classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission will review this annexation during their next meeting to recommend a zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes, second. So motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is an appeal of the impact fee assessment from Visions Ventures Investment Group LLC. This is an appeal of the impact fee assessment. I will turn it over to Britt Poole.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is an appeal. You've seen a few of these in previous months, but I will remind you, the way it works is the town will have a few minutes to present the facts and the applicant will have an opportunity to speak. You may ask questions. There is no assumption that you will make a ruling tonight. You will take the information, dwell on it, bring it back at the next meeting in January and then you would make a decision at that meeting. I'll get started if there's no questions about the process. On July 16, 2020, town staff held a pre-development meeting with the representatives of the Naval Yard Brew Pub and Beer Garden that is being planned on the site of the former Carpet One location, which is the corner of Church Street and Main. Carpet One discontinued operations at 102 West Main on March 30, 2020. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss plans to redevelop the property from a retail store to the brew pub. According to the information provided by the applicant, six additional CCF's capital contribution fees credits would be required for the project. The cost of the six additional CCF's is $18,300. That is not part of the appeal, nor is it something that there is an appeal of. Just wanted to point that information out. The total impact fee for the project as presented is $52,823.75. This is based on a fee of $429 per thousand square feet for municipal facilities and $5,608 per thousand square feet for transportation on 8,750 square feet. Since Carpet One was operational when the ordinance was adopted, they would receive a credit and that credit is $16,124.74. That would be applied to the fee that I just mentioned, bringing that, the fee for the project down to $36,699.1. The credit is based on the 6,664 square feet of retail space and 2,106 square feet of warehouse space that was available for the previous use. So that's the space that Carpet One was using. Our position, the town's position, is that the council should consider four points when making their decision. First is that the fee is based only on the square footage that will actually be used on the site. The Naval Yard proposal intends to use significant amount of outdoor seating. That was not calculated in the fee. The area is not included in the fee calculations, but will increase the impact of the project. Second, the project is located in the downtown development district, so is not required to provide the normal amount of onsite parking for this type of use. This means that patrons will almost definitely utilize public facilities to park. Developing public parking facilities can be supported by the downtown impact fee and they are very expensive to build. Third, since the project is in the downtown development area, it will be eligible automatically for reduced business license fees under an existing program. So that reduces the business license fee for the first year to zero and then two-thirds by the, in the second year and a third by the third year, so it wouldn't pay a full business license fee until the fourth year. Finally, the applicants may mention that there is a requirement to replace a clay sewer line on the site. It's our position that that shouldn't be taken into account. Any business would have to replace such antiquated lines in construction. It's a substandard service pipe and would automatically have to be replaced by any activity on the site. And we do recommend that that line be replaced. That essentially is the information that I have to present to you, but if you have any questions of me, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Anyone have anything for Mr. Poole?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carnes.
Is this property eligible for the facade grant program?
Yes, sir, it is.
Up to a maximum of what number?
Twenty thousand? Ten, ten thousand.
Very good. Anyone have anything else? Thank you, Mr. Poole. Yes, sir. Wait, you have one question behind you. Yes, sir. Mr. Coefield, yes, sir.
Mr. Poole, I'm Tommy Coefield, our representative. Really, I just have two questions for you. Has this body permitted relief on appeals in prior instances or prior businesses from the impact?
They have, yes.
And doesn't this body have the power discretion to grant that relief? Tell me a little bit more about the facade raid that Councilman Carnes just asked you.
It's a grant that's available to certain businesses within town. If they are in certain locations and are spending money on a lot of the business.
Is that something that this body could grant? Do they have the discretion to grant that relief?
Absolutely. Mr. Coefield, go right ahead. If you would, please, just state your name and address for the record.
I sure will. Is it permissible to take off my hat?
Yes, sir, it is.
First of all, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I'm a quick learner. I do recognize the one thing that brought smiles to everybody's face was the bearers of checks. I'm not bringing a check, but I am bringing in this appeal. I'm bringing an outstanding project for the town of Lexington. I live just outside of the Lexington Town Limits in Ashley Oaks. Why aren't we in the Town Limits? But anyway. And this particular project, let me show you a couple of things if I could, if this is permissible. This is a concept of the project, but I want to give each of you just some idea about.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Councilwoman and Councilmen. I forgot to do that earlier. I apologize for that. As you will see, there's certainly nothing against Carpet One. They've been a great business in Lexington for a long time. But as you'll see from that first exhibit that I gave you, this project adds a lot of aesthetic pluses to the downtown area. And I wanted you to get a good view of that as you consider our appeal. And my questions to Mr. Poole, of course, were sort of an emphasis of our request that this body has the power and the discretion to grant appeals and you've done it in the past. I do confess that I don't know the grounds that you utilized to grant that relief in the past. But I'm going to make the argument tonight that not only the aesthetic appearance of this building will make a great impact on, and that's a loaded term, I know, it'll make a great positive impact on the town of Lexington. I want to also pass out a document, if I may have permission.
Yes, sir.
There's a TV show that talks about either numbers. And I wanted you to see these numbers that we've assembled. First of all, the Vision Ventures, which is Navy Yard Beer Garden and Restaurant, it's estimated, it's been analyzed, that that business is going to bring a $1.3 million investment to downtown Lexington. Just to give you some scope, I know prior to the last meeting, y'all requested additional information to consider in your evaluation of our appeal. And we provided a lot of the blueprints and all of the particulars that reveal the scope of this project. But one of the numbers that I wanted you to be aware of is that this is not just a small undertaking. This is a big investment. And they, my clients are investing in anticipating a $798,000 amount in construction cost. And for an analysis that's been done, the South Carolina Small Business Development Center in the 29072 ZIP code, there is a $7 million amount of unmet demand for restaurant establishments. For the market research, 78% of 1,000 people served in Lexington County have indicated a desire for a venue, just like my client's business, proposed business, the Navy Yard on Main in Lexington. These are some of the impact fees, if I could pass these out. These are some of the impact fees that are protected for my client on this project. Mr. Poole did mention a couple of those figures. But as you know, on a project like this, and on this particular project, there's a, there is a water fee, there's a sewer fee, there's an impact fee on facilities and equipment, and then there's a very hefty impact fee on transportation. And then, of course, Mr. Poole, I think, did mention the credit. We're not disputing getting a credit. That's a good thing. So that's something that, anything like that is a positive thing for my client. But then on top of these impact fees, and I'm sure I'm not the first one to stand here and make the argument that that is a huge financial burden, particularly on my clients that are coming forth with this new project. But in addition, it struck me as rather, to use a football term, almost like pile-a-known, was a fee for the replacement of a sewer line, a clay. Do they even make clay pipes for sewer lines, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. That one's probably been in the ground for 100 years.
Well, it just so happens that here comes my client. They're building this huge project and it's, they're sort of getting stuck with this $8,500 fee. And let me show you the, I'm not just pulling that figure out of the air. I could present this off to, it is an estimate from our contractor, Montgomery Construction. It's going to be, it's going to be $8,500 on top of all of the other fees to replace that old clay pipe. You know, I hesitate to do this. I'm a lawyer and I have never alluded to the television show Friends before. But if there are any of you that are fans of the show Friends, there was this one episode where Joey's refrigerator went out. And unfortunately, his roommate Chandler had just moved out a few days earlier and all of a sudden, the refrigerator was out. And so lo and behold, one of the, one of the girls across the hall, I think it was Rachel, she came across and she opened the refrigerator and pulled something out and Joey rushed over and said, whoa, wait a minute. He just reached into, I think the refrigerator's bad. I think you need to replace our refrigerator. Of course, Rachel was strong-willed. She decided not to do it. And so here comes Chandler. Chandler came back to visit Joey one day and Joey literally tackled him into the refrigerator and the refrigerator tripped a little bit. And he says, Chandler. And he says, Chandler, hey, man, you've damaged my refrigerator. You've got to replace the refrigerator. Now, I'm not trying to be flip about this. I mainly just wanted to use that as an illustration purpose only. Because I know the town has serious financial needs, and you want to take advantage of every particular and potential revenue. I understand that. I've been in that position before in other situations. But in this particular situation, what I'm asking each of you to consider is the huge impact, there's that word again, that my client's entrepreneurial spirit is bringing to the town of Lexington a lot of positive things that are not only going to affect them, but also have an impact on surrounding small businesses. And I think those are all positive things that I'm simply asking you to utilize your discretion to give them some sort of, not just the credit, which we're thankful for, but some kind of break from the, all of the impact fees that they're having lodged against them. One of the things that I suggested for starters is if the council would consider that $8,500 replacement fee that's going to have to be incurred to replace that old clay pipe, Joey's refrigerator, if you will, if you would consider, at the very least, considering that as an offset to the impact fees that are being charged to my client. Do you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cofield? Anyone have anything? Yes, sir, Mr. Lyle.
Thank you. Mr. Cofield, thanks for coming and presenting, and this looks like an amazing project. The 7 million of unmet demand for restaurant establishments, is that in annual sales? Or is that in value of retail space? What is this number, 7 million?
I confess I don't know the answer to that. Let me ask my client.
No, thank you.
Mr. Lyle, that number actually comes from the South Carolina Small Business Development Council or Center. That is actually on an annual basis, and it's actually 7 million of unmet demand in the 29072 ZIP code. And it's actually for restaurants and drinking establishments, not just restaurants alone.
Gross receipts? I mean, sales and, okay. And then, is that the same study that gave us the 78% of the 1,000 people served indicated desire for?
No, sir. So I actually own a public relations firm here in South Carolina. We conducted some primary independent research that actually found those statistics. And that survey, as Tommy actually said, it was in Lexington County, that actually was directed at people in the 29072 ZIP code as well.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Sir, if you don't mind, please just introduce yourself, sir, for the record, so we'll have that on record.
Sure. My name is Gavin Smith. I'm one of the partners of Vision Ventures LLC, which will actually oversee the management of Navy Yard on Main.
Very good, Gavin. Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Carnes.
Mr. Cofield.
Yes, Mr. Carnes, how are you?
First off, congratulations on your book. I don't know if y'all know, Tommy Cofield published a book very recently, and maybe it's your second or third, one of our local authors. Hey. My question is the site sewer piping. Can somebody tell me, is that actually in the right of way? Or is that on the property itself?
Service line. So the majority of it would be on the property, but the tie-in might be in right of way.
Okay, so, just help me, like, yeah, like 80% of it?
Right. You know, I don't know the answer to what percentage, but it would extend from the right of way onto the property. It's a single service. It's not a main in any way. It serves just that property.
So is that where it's tying into that sanitary sewer, is that on their side of the street?
I don't know. John, do you know? Alan here?
Alan's here.
It's in the street. It's in the street.
Like in the middle aisle?
So we got to dig up the street we just paved.
So that, so that clay, that clay pipe extends all the way to the tie-in of our sewer line in the middle of the street? Got it. What size is that line? Thank you.
While we're talking about that, and we have the experts back there, is a four-inch line sufficient for this business? Okay. Very good. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Cofield? Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Actually, my question is twofold. Mr. Poole, or Mr. Cunningham, maybe. If we grant a variance, and they don't move forward with a lease, would that variance stay with the property, or would it come down void?
It would be attached to the project, would it not? But the impact fee would change on a different project because of the use would be different. We might have to investigate that answer without having dealt with that one.
That being said, do we have a lease in place on the property that is current, or do we not?
I don't have an answer to that. That would be better directed to the appealing.
There is a lease.
So to answer your question, we are actually negotiating the terms of the lease at this time. We've been waiting for this hearing to sort of see how this plays out. You know, if I may, you know, this is a major impact to our business, to our startup budget. Mr. Mayor, as a former restaurant owner, you can understand that this is a major burden on our startup budget. This fee alone would pay for all of our bar equipment. So sort of waiting to see how this plays out before we put pen to paper on any sort of lease.
So there's not a lease in place at the current?
There is not, but I would like to emphasize that we have a wonderful relationship with the Addys, who I'm sure you're familiar with, that own the building. We've worked hand in hand with them on this process. You know, sort of how this plays out will certainly influence how the lease is pursued.
Good. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions?
One more.
Yes, Ms. Manis.
Mr. Poole, what did you say their credit was? So the number that they have down here of $14,599 is wrong.
Then the number I have is $16,124.74.
Mr. Hanson, I think.
Yeah, this was, these numbers are back from September. So the numbers that Britt gave us tonight are the actual numbers.
So do you have a copy of the numbers, Britt?
Yes, ma'am.
That Mr. Cofield gave us?
I have a, yes.
So are any of these other numbers different?
The CCFs are the same.
Yes, sir, they should be.
John. Come up to the microphone, please, before I get yelled at again.
The impact fee on the sheet that we created based off the plans is actually higher than the ones that we estimated because the square footage of the building on the plans was actually higher. Additionally, the credit that was provided on the most recent form is actually higher because we authorized some credit for the warehouse building that was not initially calculated on the sheet that they had.
Councilmember Manis, to answer your question, they're essentially all different. So the newer quote sheet is this. I only have the one copied, which we can get a copy for everybody. But they are essentially all different because the credit, as John was saying, the credits aren't the same. Some of the square footages are different. They're not huge differences, but there are differences.
Okay.
$16,000 different.
Yeah, I apologize if I put.
It's okay.
I was actually reading from a previous letter, I think, that contained those, so.
That's correct.
I'll have to take the blame for that.
No problem.
So can Gavin explain this market research to me again?
Sure. So we conducted primary research in the 29072 ZIP code. That was 1,000 people. I believe it was back in July of 2000, this year, 2020. It consisted of 15 questions, one of which was, if there was a beer garden establishment on Main Street in the town of Lexington, would you be likely to visit? 76% of those individuals indicated that they would be willing to visit that establishment.
So were the other questions related to the downtown area?
Yes, all questions were related to the downtown area. Yes, I know. I mean, unfortunately, I couldn't recite all the questions to you. Some of those were demographic-based questions to understand their, you know, their race, their gender, you know, all of that. But it also asked, you know, what sort of features were they looking for in a beer garden establishment? Did they know what a beer garden was? What sort of, you know, drinks did they prefer? What sort of food did they, you know, prefer? They looked at all of those restaurant and beer garden specific.
So was it 29072, or just the Town Limits of 29072?
It was, it was the 29072 ZIP code. It was, there was no way to target it just to the Town Limits, or the platform that we use.
And talk to me about the parking.
Sure.
I mean, this is beautiful. This is absolutely beautiful, and would look very nice downtown. But tell me what y'all intend to do when this place is full, and about the parking.
Sure. So first and foremost, we have 18 parking spots on premises. That's what was there with the Carpet One building. Those are striped parking spots. In addition to that, we do have, I'm not sure of the proper terminology for this, but there's a part of the road that sort of pulls aside in front of the building that we did discuss with the initial meeting with the town, if that would remain in place. Could we use that for valet parking? They did give us sort of unwritten permission. I think that their exact terminology was they couldn't give us written permission to do that for legal reasons. But they said that they would see no issue with that. So we plan to use that and actually partner with the restaurant across the street, Aladeas, to offer valet parking on both sides of the road. In the town planning meeting, they said that we could use any town facilities for that valet parking for them to be able to take the cars to. Furthermore, we have negotiated, or I shouldn't say negotiated, we've begun discussions with the church behind us to be able to use their parking lot on all days other than Sunday, when church is in session.
I've got a follow-up real quick, Gavin.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carnes.
This is just out of curiosity. I mean, we've seen some conceptualists. Tell us about the buildings in the back rear that I'm looking at here. Do you have stated plans for those, or is it just kind of open retail?
So actually, all the buildings that are on the premises will be used for the restaurant and beer garden. So you have the main building, which is, you know, the staple building on the property, but you have the rear building as well. We've designed that meticulously to be used not only during general operational hours, but should we have a private event or a private party that would like to come in. We have carefully designed that facility to be able to close off. It will have its own dedicated entrance, access to the kitchen, its own bar, access to outside. So it will double as private events space. It will also double as, you know, general use space as well. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Follow-up. Mr. Ford, I believe this is still in TIF district, and we'll qualify under the TIF, correct? That being said, Mr. Cofield, you may have to call your client back up. Have y'all done an appraisal on what the value of the building would be worth when you're finished with your project?
My name is Jeremy Addy. I live at 108 Middlebrook Drive. So, I mean, based on like similar properties, like on cap rates and everything, it'll be right at like 2.5 million.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any more questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Manis.
From start to opening, how long will it take?
From start to opening, we expect about a 90-day construction period. Now, with weather factored in that, they told us it could be anywhere between 90 and 120 days. After we are done with construction, we expect about 30 to 45 days of training. So I would, I would tell you conservatively six months. Could be sooner.
Very good. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? All right. Thank you all very much. We'll take this under consideration. Thank you for being with us tonight. At this time, we'll move into item number three on tonight's agenda. It was added at the beginning of our meeting. It will be a mask ordinance that will be put into effect. We will have our second reading and public hearing at our next meeting to be determined here in the next week or so. We'll get together and find out what date works for staff and put that together. But with the rising number of COVID exposures, we just read something off the WIS site. The spike we are experiencing today is higher than the spike in the summertime. So it's time for everyone to go back and do their part to try to get ahead of this thing before it takes over and inundates our medical folks that we have in town. Especially the ones at the hospital are telling us, please, please, please help us. They're really experiencing some high numbers and need our help. So we are going to move forward and do that and put a mask ordinance back in place. Mayor Pro Tem, do you have something you'd like to add? I thought you wanted to add something. I'm sorry. Anyone else have anything? Very good. I would ask for a motion to add that on our next note. We are just doing that in name only. My fault. First reading in name only. Thank you. Very good. Anyone have any comments or questions? And then we will hear announcements from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Mr. Mayor, you need a first, a motion and a second.
I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Manis, second. So motion. Any further discussion? And all is a favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Very good. At this time, we will hear announcements from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of all the council members, we would like, and the mayor, we would like to wish Councilmember Steve Baker a belated happy birthday. His birthday was yesterday. So happy birthday, Steve. Since we last met, our very own Councilmember Kathy Manis was sworn in as the President of the National League of Cities on November the 20th, 2020. Even though her ceremony was virtual due to COVID, we still cheered her on so she would know how proud we are of her. Congratulations, Kathy, and thank you for everything you do for all the towns across America. We're very proud of you. We hope everyone enjoyed the first virtual Christmas tree lighting on Friday night. The weather cleared up for the Saturday and Sunday Snowball Festival events. Thank you to all the staff members who made it possible. This Thursday, December the 10th, we have another special tree lighting service at Willoughby-Carrick Park located at 804 Hendrick Street. It is hard to believe that this will be the 10th annual care lighting program at Carrick Park. We would like to thank former Councilmember Constance Fleming for organizing this program each year. Also, many thanks to the Parks Department staff for installing Christmas lights each year for this event. We hope everyone can come out to Carrick Park on Thursday night from 6 to 7. COVID restrictions will be in place. Town Council will not have a work session in December, but will meet again in the New Year on January the 4th, 2021, at 6:30 for council's regular meeting. Planning Commission will not meet in December, but will meet again on January the 20th, 2021. Town Hall will be closed December the 24th and 25th in observance of the Christmas holidays, and will also be closed on Friday, January the 1st, 2021. and will also be closed on Friday, January 1, 2021, observance of New Year's Day. It truly has been a very unusual year, yet we all have so much to be thankful for. We can, we would like to thank our staff, our citizens, and our businesses for continuing to do everything possible to keep each other safe during the COVID-19 pandemic. On behalf of the mayor and my fellow council members, we would like to wish you and your families a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you very much for the announcements, does anyone else on council have anything they'd like to add? Hearing none, is there any questions from the news media tonight? I think we had somebody outside the door peeking in, nope. Any public comments, are there any comments from the public regarding tonight's agenda? Anyone have anything they'd like to add? Very good, that concludes our business for this evening, thank you for watching Town Council Meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall Monday evening, December 7, 2020. Recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during the next week, and the video will be available on the town's website at lexsc.com. Without objection, we are adjourned.